Welcome to the November 13, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. I will call the hearing to order at 1:01 PM. Ms. Carmen, can you please have a roll call?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Chair Wardlow.
Here.
Vice Chair Boss.
Present.
Commissioner Bauckey.
Here.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
And Commissioner Wiscombe.
Here.
We have Quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements or appeals?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. We have two. One announcement of an appeal for 3139 C Cliff. We also received an appeal of the Single Family Design Board denial of the project. So that will be scheduled for your review in the upcoming weeks. And then for an announcement, I also wanted to bring Planning Commission and the public's attention to a special open house that's being facilitated by a group of Cal Poly students who are going to be studying the De La Vina Corridor as it connects the downtown to the Upper State Street area. The open house will be this Friday from 12 to 2 PM here at City Hall's 735 Ana Capa Street, but specifically in the IT Training Room. The public is invited to attend. We encourage participation to gather input and hear their presentation on the start of their research of that corridor.
Thank you. And do we have any requests for continuances, withdrawals, or postponements or ex-agenda items?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. As the agenda noted, 1250 Cliff Drive has been continued to November 20.
Okay, thank you. And that takes us on to Item C, comments from members of the public pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Due to time constraints, please limit public comment to two minutes. Ms. Carmen, do we have anyone in person or remote that would like to provide comment?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. At this time, I do have one speaker's look for in-person public comment. If Cass Ensberg would like to come up to the podium, you will have two minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Cass Ensberg, and I'm here representing the Architectural Foundation of Santa Barbara and to bring you your 2026 Kids Draw Architecture calendars. And after 39 years, you wouldn't think I would need to read this, but I want to be sure I don't forget anything. So yeah, 39 years we've been doing this to help our young ones and their families to understand what it is that makes Santa Barbara unique and different from anywhere else in the world, with a classic style and a beautiful built environment in this place between the mountains and the ocean. We do this by sketching our important public buildings, and through this activity, we focus on the details, as you can see by the, by the, these delightful drawings. This year, we enjoyed the beautiful spring day at Casa de Oleguera and on the lawn of the De La Gara Plaza to sketch the historic buildings in our civic center. The cover sketch of City Hall is by 11-year-old Megan Molina, and the inside calendar features sketches of all the other 35 young artists from ages four to 15, who participated along with their parents. We want to thank and appreciate everyone who participated, including Councilwoman Sneddon, who came and sketched with us, and to recognize our generous donors who are the sponsors who are listed on the back of the calendar. Finally, we invite you all, the community and all of you, to join us at the annual show and the reception this Sunday, November 16, from 1 to 3, at the Architectural Foundation of Santa Barbara. And if you want any more information, you can contact me or the Architectural Foundation. And thank you very much, and thank you all for your really good, hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wiscombe would like to make a comment.
Ms. Ensberg, just a thank you. This is so nice to get every year, and I hope, thank you for sponsoring the Kids Draw. I think it's a wonderful program, and I do hope that everyone will go. Would you repeat, Sunday's open house is where and what time again?
It's, yes, thank you, and thank you for those kind words. There's a whole committee that does the work, and it's a, you know, effort of love. It's at the Architectural Foundation, which is at the corner of Garden and Victoria. So that's 229 East Victoria Street, and it is on Sunday, November 16, this Sunday, from 1 to 3, and all are welcome.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment requests?
Thank you. At this time, I don't have any more speaker slips for in-person public comments, so I will turn my attention to virtual participation. If anyone online would like to speak under general, you can raise your hand at this time, though I'm not seeing any raised hands, and we did not receive any written correspondence. So I will give it back to you.
Thank you. And we will now close the general public comment. We will move on to Item Three, Historic Resource Ordinance Updates. Staff request the Planning Commission to initiate and consider a recommendation to City Council for adoption of zoning ordinance amendments related to the definition of historic resources to change terminology from Historic Resources Inventory to Local Register of Historical Resources. We have Nicole Hernandez, Architectural Historian, with us today to provide a staff presentation. Ms. Hernandez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Wardlow and Commissioners. As you noted, I'm Nicole Hernandez, Architectural Historian, and I'm going to present the amendments to the zoning ordinance related to the definitions of historic resources for you today. So the purpose is really to initiate and consider a recommendation to City Council for adoption of zoning ordinance amendments related to the definition of historic resources, as you stated, from Historic Resources Inventory to Local Register of Historic Resources. I just want to note, all the photos in this presentation are buildings that are listed on that inventory, just to kind of illustrate as we go through what's vulnerable to demolition without any environmental review if we do not make this change. The change is necessary due to AB 130, which was recently signed by Governor Newsom on June 30, 2025. The state housing law provides a statutory exemption from, for demolition under SEQA unless the project satisfies a certain criteria. And the key criteria here is that properties must be placed on a national, state, or local register before preliminary application is submitted for a housing project. And property is not listed as historic can be demolished without any environmental review through the SEQA process to evaluate for significance or impact. And that is a key change in our process. So Santa Barbara has three levels of historic resources. We have landmarks, which are designated by City Council, structures of merit, which are designated by the Landmarks Commission, and items on the Historic Resources Inventory, which is considered by definition our local historic register, because they have evidence on record that they meet criteria for significance and have been identified by the Historic Landmarks Commission in a public hearing or the Architectural Historian as significant. Adopting terminology consistent with the states, which is called a register, will ensure compliance with state law and eliminate potential confusion for applicants navigating our city requirements and ensure that sites listed on our inventory maintain protection against demolition, as they are already under the jurisdiction of the Historic Landmarks Commission and have to meet the findings of historic resources. So as you can see on our Historic Resources map, everything in blue, red, or green are listed on the Historic Resources Inventory, and that constitutes over 700 buildings. And they are all the vulnerable buildings that could be demolished without SEQA review. So with AB 130, structures not listed on the register, again, are vulnerable to demolition without environmental review, which would include an environmental impact report that would analyze alternatives to demolition, and Historic Landmarks Commission public hearings and decision, and probably most important, without any public notice or comment on the importance of their own buildings in their community. So the objectives of the amendment is to change inventory to register to protect these buildings, and again, eliminate confusion. So we're going to align exactly with the state language, so there's no confusion as to what is exempt from the SEQA. And just here is our existing definition. It's a list of those structures, sites, or features identified by the Historic Landmarks Commission or the city's Architectural Historian as historically significant and eligible for formal designation as a landmark structure of merit, historic district, contributing resource to a district. And this was formerly known as the Potential Historic Resources List. That name was eliminated when we did a complete overhaul in 2021 of the Historic Resources Ordinance, because it was so misleading, because everything on the inventory goes to HLC and has to meet historic standards and Historic Landmarks Commission findings. So the proposed definition is to align with the California Public Resources Code 5020.1, Local Register of Historic Resources, which is a list of properties officially designated or recognized as historically significant by the city of Santa Barbara, as per the procedures outlined in the Chapter 30157, formally referred to as the Historic Resources Inventory. And each of these does have, again, evidence on record that they qualify as historic resources. And as a result, and as illustrated in Attachment A, the amendments will change the language in the following chapters, 30.57, Landmark District and Historic District Overlay Zones, 30.157, Historic Resources, 30.220, Design Review, and the definition in 30.300. The amendment must be found consistent with the city charter, general plan, state and federal laws. Proposed amendments are consistent with the city charter and HLC authority identified therein, and they have general plan consistency with the Historic Resources Element, which our community was really fortunate to have adopted in 2012. And it should be noted, not all communities have such an element, and it's really beneficial for our community to have this direction with the goals of HR 3 to discourage demolition and HR 5.1 to help preserve neighborhoods that have retained historic character. And the proposed ordinance amendments qualify for an exemption under 15305 of the SEQA guidelines because they do not result in any change in land use or density. And the next steps would be a public hearing at City Council to review the amendments, and if adopted, to update all our language in our Master Environmental Assessment Guidelines, the Historic Resource Design Guidelines, the Historic Map, the Historic Resources Reports, and the Acela Permitting System. And I just wanted to note, these amendments really focus on preserving identified historic resources, but for housing projects, the city will no longer be able to identify buildings, evaluate buildings 50 years or older for historic significance, as they'll be exempt from any review. This is a different method than we have been doing to date. Anything that comes in for a project at Project Seminole, we review if it's over 50 years old to see if it's historic. It has proven a valuable tool for decades in Santa Barbara to ensure that buildings that have not been identified are not completely obliterated without any public notice or input. But the SB 130 does take that away. And this, I just wanted to illustrate, is one of the buildings that was not identified as historic resource until recently, when it came in for a project and came across my desk to review for historic. Even though it's in the El Pueblo Viejo Historic District, it wasn't tagged at all with no history attached to it. It was constructed in 1927 for the telephone company, when it was like the premier technology at the time, and it was meticulously modeled after this 1700 building in Andalucia. It was really an amazing piece, but that's kind of the thing that is vulnerable without the 50-year review, which there's nothing we can do about for housing projects at this point, except change our practices to be more proactive. And instead of doing more of the retroactive, identifying resources when they come in for review, going out and doing surveys and identifying resources to protect them before projects come in. Thus, also, is the best practice, because it creates so much more clarity at the beginning for property owners, prospective buyers, community members of what resources are protected. I think I often am stuck in the very difficult situation of telling people who come in with a project that they've planned all out, that the building's actually historic and they're going to need to pivot their project. So the survey is our best new tactic for that, addressing that. So our recommendation for you today is that the Planning Commission consider amendments to the zoning ordinance relating to historic resources and recommend to City Council to amend the zoning ordinance to ensure the protection of the properties listed on the Historic Resources Inventory, and determine that the ordinance amendments related to historic resources are consistent with the general plan, and determine that the ordinance amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15305. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
And yes, we do have an HLC Commissioner here, Dennis Dorton, as well.
Would you like to make any comments?
Good afternoon, and nice to see you all again. I'm Dennis Dorton. I'm a member of the HLC, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the HLC. The HLC urges this commission to support the staff's recommendation for a zoning ordinance amendment changing the terminology used to identify historical resources. The HLC believes this action is necessary in order to protect Santa Barbara's historic heritage. The staff memo you received does a good job of explaining the necessity for this change. Now, at first glance, this might seem like one of those irksome little chores that makes you wonder, why are we doing this? The concern is that failure to align language and definitions between local and state documents is a potential source of confusion, ambiguity, and conflicting interpretations in the development and permitting process. Confusion, ambiguity, and conflicting interpretations are the ingredients for problem-plagued, poor developments. The proposed amendment is related to the definition of historic resources, is a necessary action to avoid problems in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Hernandez. We will now open it up for public comment, for comments on this item. Ms. Carmen, do we have any members?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. At this time, I don't have any speaker slips for in-person public comment, so I will move to virtual participation, which we do have one hand raised. So I'm going to give you permission to talk. That's the Citizens Planning Association, and you will have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Mary Ellen Brooks. I am president of the Citizens Planning Association. We had some concerns about what the action that you're about to make some decisions on. I felt a little bit better after Mr. Dorton made his comment. But CPA, we understand that this item has come before you, and staff had sent it to the Planning Commission now, perhaps before, the Historic Structures and the Historic Landmark Commission. We just want to make sure that this proposal has been fully discussed, you know, in the Historic Landmarks Commission. And if there were comments made during that discussion, we were unable to find them. So, you know, if you have access to those comments, or, you know, if they have been written down somewhere or recorded, we'd like to hear a little bit more about them to make sure that the Historic Landmark Commission agrees with this. I feel, as I said, Mr. Dorton has said they support it, but we don't see anything officially in any of the reports. I also just would like to say that, yeah, they're not in the minutes of the Historic Landmark Commission meeting of October 22. Like to see those, you know, today, or postpone this item until the written recommendations, you know, are given to you. So we recommend that the draft ordinance be placed on the Historic Landmark Commission Agenda for Discussion and Comments. I know, I understand that with the state mandates, AB 130, maybe there's, you know, a reason for the rush to this, but as long as the Historic Landmark Commission agrees, and that, you know, have gotten a chance to vote on this or to add comments, then we'd say, yes, you know, you're ready to act today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we don't have any more participants online, and we did not receive any written correspondence for this item, so I'm going to give it back to you.
Thank you. And we will now open it up for questions from my fellow Commissioners, who would like to go first. Commissioner Bauckey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Got a couple of questions, and I'm seeing some parallels here between SB 330 and this as far as the legislature acting, making a decision, and then not giving communities any time to respond, and so we leave ourselves exposed to potential demolition in this case, or in the case of SB 330, applications that don't fit cities' objective design standards that are adopted. You know, it takes a year or so to get those to happen, and so those rules don't apply to anybody who walks in the door of preliminary application. My question is to staff as to whether or not the legislature intends to create the situations of these time periods that put communities at risk of responding to their legislation, or are they just not smart enough to understand it takes communities time to respond to their actions? I think this bill came into effect the day after the governor signed. There wasn't like, okay, it's January, or something giving local communities any kind of response time. So I wanted to understand that, and I want also to understand, right now, we're in this vortex. If somebody walked in the door today, they could probably get away of demolishing a building. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. You are correct. If somebody came in, they could demolish the building without SEQA review. Based on that housing law, AB 130, which, and this is my understanding, to answer your first question about how it was passed without community response, it was passed through the budget. If you tie anything to the budget, you can skip the legislative process and pass it straight through, and that's why it was signed mid-year, June 30. And so what didn't go through the process many of the legislative issues?
Chair Wardlow and Commissioner Bauckey, I do want to clarify that the, what is on our inventory would, is arguably protected right now. We're just changing the language to align with state law, so that if someone was to come in and argue that that's not our register, we would be able to take this to court, and it would be a lot clearer. And, but yes, the preliminary application is, is one of the reasons why we are expediting this process as much as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Wardlow, through you to Commissioner Bauckey. So it was passed June 30, went into effect immediately. I mean, we've all been attending SEQA trainings, like what does this? I mean, we've all been attending SEQA trainings, like, what does this mean, and all up and down the state, trying to figure out, okay, here's the law, how do we read it? What is the interpretation? What does that mean for our specific municipality? So there's a little bit of time in getting guidance from attorneys and, you know, checking in with our city attorney's office and trying to figure out, and then what are we going to do? Because we, like, we said, we could get an application today that might be one of our most, you know, beloved historic resources, and if it's not on a list, then, and it's a housing project, then that remains vulnerable to demolition. So generally, again, trying to pull together, what is the path of least resistance to do this so that we have a more legally defensible ordinance, and that we aren't having to go back and forth and argue whether, oh, well, this, it's not called a register, when it's just called the inventory despite its meaning and what we've understood it to be and how we've applied it.
It's my understanding, you're basically trying to get the terminologies to match our local terminology, so there isn't any ambiguity. You know, I completely agree with council, that's the way to address that. But my concern is the legislature continues to create these vortex time periods, instead of saying, okay, it's going to be effective in six months, or a year, or something to allow local governments actually to respond and do something proactive. We leave ourselves in these, you know, that's why you got developers remedy, you know, that they didn't give cities enough time to get housing elements adopted. They, you know, all of a sudden changed the rules of the game, and then we get these situations that the legislature continues to create without giving communities enough time to respond, and it's very frustrating.
I would agree on our side as well, and just the scramble to kind of figure out what's next and how are we going to address this.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this to us today. I just want to be clear, I heard what was said, but just to be clear, my understanding is that this is really, at least for us, a distinction without a difference. What we're changing is the name, and so what we get by that is the state recognition of our historic resources inventory. This is about making sure that the state sees what we have, is that right?
Exactly.
Okay. And then my second question is, you brought up in the inventory, landmarks, structures of merit, and the historic resources inventory, are all three of those then going to be transitioned into the local register of historic places?
As far as the legislation is concerned, it's called designated or listed, so the landmarks and structures of merit are already designated. It's the listed properties are in the inventory, they're separate. So all three will be protected through the state law.
So all the structures of merit in single-family neighborhoods are then protected and then exempt, or not exempt, from SEQA?
Right.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
And historic resources, if they are not designated as structures of merit or city landmarks, there is an additional designation process through HLC that you can qualify for property tax incentives and other things. So the, what Nicole was mentioning earlier is that there's evidence on record, so those listed have evidence on record that they are historic resources, and should they wish, they could go to become a designated structure of merit or a designated landmark if approved by city council.
Okay, so does that also include historic resources, or does that include EPV contributors?
It does, yes. Thank you for asking, Commissioner Peterson.
Okay, so all of those, wherever they are on the list, would then be, would not be exempt from SEQA?
Correct. That is exactly what we're trying to achieve.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you think that's the best course of action, or should only some of the buildings, like the ones only on the historic resources inventory, be on the local register? Because we have a lot of buildings, a lot of buildings in our housing priority overlay that it may be difficult to get housing if they're all in this list.
As I done, as I put some of those photos on the presentation for you, they tend to be some of our larger buildings that are in the housing overlay. And I put those there because I think through the SEQA process and having them go through the SEQA process, we can come up with some really amazing projects, including adaptive reuse, additions to historic buildings, many of which we have seen through the Historic Landmarks Commission and through the public process. So I do not think that any of these buildings should not be on that list. I think they should all be. I think the citizens of Santa Barbara deserve the chance to have public comment on them, and perhaps look at the best creative solution for housing in these buildings. Demolition is not the only solution for housing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner DeLucio.
Thanks, staff, for being so proactive on this. This is really a simple fix, we're just changing the word to register. Again, I agree, I don't know SB 130, how the state comes up with this stuff, and all of a sudden says, okay, now we're going to change this, and we're going to change that, you know, I don't know where that's coming from. But when it was passed, did they give you a timeline in order to do it? Is there, or that was pretty open-ended?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner. They did not. I mean, you just, you had to read the law and decide if you were going to change it or not. They passed it without asking, you know, it just came right through. And luckily, we went to some SEQA trainings where they outlined it very carefully, and we immediately started planning meetings, again, with the city attorney's office, what do we need to do to protect our community?
Thank you for that.
Especially the public process.
Yeah, and if we're in agreement with this to move it forward, it doesn't come back to us, it just goes directly to council, is that the next step?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. It goes straight to city council after this.
Okay, and this did go before HLC, correct?
I announced it at HLC on October 22nd, and again on November 5th. And on October 22nd, Commissioner Enzberg asked us if we could make it go faster, which we couldn't because of our own deadlines and staff time, but they understood the urgency, and there was no objections to moving it forward or requests to have it agenda.
So there were a couple of opportunities to see if it would be any objections, and so it never formally went to the HLC, but it did go on an informational basis on a couple of occasions?
Yes, and that is because the authority to alter the zoning code is with the planning commission and council.
I don't want to see this upheld, you know, we need to move forward, this is a simple fix. One final question, I know you have 700, over 700 little dots on your treasury map, treasure map. When somebody gets, is it called a treasure map? When somebody gets on the, gets, you know, gets on that map, can they themselves get off? Can an owner request to be taken off?
If it's on the inventory register, there is a process outlined in the zoning code to be removed. You can come with a report that provides evidence to the landmarks commission that it doesn't qualify as historic resource.
God, you have to give reasons why you think it should be taken off.
There is that opportunity.
You have to give reasons why you think it should be taken off.
Right.
It's not just like...
Right. Once it's designated a structure of merit or landmark, those are, have a 10-day appeal period, and once those are completely designated, they cannot come off unless they're demolished by, in a natural event or through, like, the SEQA process, because we designate them to protect them, and we wouldn't be protecting them if we let people come off and on at their whims.
Okay, thanks for explaining that. And thank you for all your service. I know you're going to be leaving us on December 31st, and you've been with the city...
December 2nd, yes, you're welcome.
December 2nd?
Yes.
You've been with the city like 13 years?
13 years.
And you've done a wonderful job, and you can be hard to replace.
It's been an honor.
Thank you.
Work with these amazing buildings, actually, and the community members. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll now go to Ms. Axanega briefly.
I just, thank you, Chair Wardlow. I just wanted to clarify that just because something is a designated historic resource doesn't mean that it can't ever qualify for any SEQA exemptions, it just means it wouldn't qualify for the statutory exemption immediately. It means that that resource would be considered as part of the SEQA analysis. So if you did have a structure of merit that's on the historic resources designation, it doesn't mean that you can't do an addition without doing an EIR. You certainly could if there are certain parameters that are met. So I just want to make that distinction so that homeowners or property owners on this list don't misunderstand that it means that they're going to the full SEQA process. A SEQA exemption might be the appropriate SEQA review path, it just means that it's acknowledged as a resource when we are doing that analysis.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Boss.
Thank you. I'll just add in my gratitude for bringing this forward quickly. And a question or clarification, does the city not have a lobbyist who follows the state budget process?
Commissioner Boss, we do have a lobbyist, it's Townsend.
Okay, so this is something that they would have read and been aware of in April of this year, so long before it was approved.
They make us aware of it in advance.
Okay, okay.
Doesn't mean there's anything we can do about it, but really.
Right, I just want to, I think I was under the impression from the staff report that this was like slid in at 11:58 PM on June 30th, but it was actually in a couple months before. So we did have, we had a couple months of awareness before the budget was passed. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Commissioner Peterson, did you...
Yeah, I just wanted to build off what you were saying. There, what we're talking about in AB 130 for the housing SEQA exemption is for all housing projects, whereas there are other SEQA exemptions, say for SB 35, like affordable housing projects, that this doesn't necessarily impact, like, is that right?
There's multiple SEQA exemption processes. There's statutory exemptions that are kind of like by right, as long as you meet the qualifications. And then there's categorical exemptions that are type categories of projects that are understood to be reasonably appropriate for an exemption, means small in nature, small footprint, or an existing facility, for example, that's being improved or added to. So there's categories that are identified as appropriate to not require additional review. Either category, there's multiple categories or exemptions that are available to projects under SEQA, and a housing project could use any one of them, as long as they meet the criteria. AB 130 is a statutory exemption, so it means if you meet these, the criteria that it lists, it's just automatically required. Categorical exemptions do require additional study of, for instance, like archaeological resources or historic resources, it has certain vetting that also has to take place, and a housing project could use one of those as well. It really just depends on what's the most appropriate exemption category for a project, whether it's housing or not. You have to look at what type of project it is, what exemptions are available, which one fits it best. The benefit of AB 130 as a statutory exemption is it has a broader reach for larger projects, whereas the categorical exemptions are really kind of limited to smaller projects, smaller number of units, smaller square footages. So if you're looking for a larger project, you likely would not fit in any of the categorical exemptions. That's where this statutory exemption goes above and beyond and says, this could also be used for larger projects if you need these criteria. So that's where, why you'd see a larger project perhaps use AB 130, and a smaller project might use a categorical exemption because it's a smaller project and it doesn't have much impact understandably. So, but it could use, a smaller project could also use AB 130, it's just, they have other options available to them, likely. Hopefully it didn't confuse it, let me know if it did.
But for 100% affordable housing projects, they already have a, is that statutory?
They have a different statutory exemption.
Yeah, they do, okay.
Another kind of statutory exemption we saw use, like transit-oriented development, so housing near transit, that's, statutory exemptions are built to facilitate a certain very particular type of development by using, creating a SEQA statutory exemption process for them. So there's criteria that you have to meet to meet those statutory exemptions, because it's really trying to get at a very particular type of development. And they typically have, you know, a laundry list with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? If not, we'll move on to deliberations and comments from the commission. Commissioner Wiskom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express my appreciation, and Ms. Hernandez, we're going to miss you definitely, and thank you for 13 years of great service. And I can totally support the staff recommendation on this. I think you've brought it to us in a really timely manner to get it out here to us, so very appreciative for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bauckey.
I'd also like to thank you for your expedited work on this item. It's nice to see that we can move quickly if needed, and this is one that we definitely need to move quickly on, so thank you for your efforts on this one. Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson.
I want to echo this, I want to thank you. I think it's important that we follow state law, and we're doing that here to our benefit, and thank you for your years of service. I will be supporting the motion.
Any other comments?
Can I make a motion?
We can, no more comments? I would just like to say, I really appreciate the work of staff, and thank you for your service and time. Obviously, I think this is something that we need to do, and I'm really excited to see that staff works so hard to get this done so quickly. Obviously, preserving our historic resource is really important, and so I'm really happy that the city has moved forward with this, and I'm excited to support this. Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner DeLucio?
Do I need to read every single thing? I'll make a motion, we do initiate the zoning ordinance amendment, and then we recommend the city council to amend the zoning ordinance, ensure protection of the properties listed on the historic resource inventory, specifically Chapter 30.57 Landmark and Historic District Overlay Zones, Chapter 30.157 Historic Resources, Chapter 3220 Design Review, and Chapter 30, 300, 080H Definitions, and determine that the ordinance amendments related to historic resources are consistent with the general plan, and determine that it's exempt from SEQA. That's my motion.
Second.
Could we please have a roll call? Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Commissioner DeLucio.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiskom?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauckey?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boss?
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carmen, and thank you, everyone. Really appreciate the presentation and all of staff's work on this. We will now close with an, we will now move on to the administrative portion of our agenda. Any staff hearing officer reports?
Yeah, I'll give a real brief one. There was a meeting yesterday, Tess Harris is the staff hearing officer, and she actually approved three modifications, 1428 Harborview Drive, 405 West Solar Street, and 529 De Lavina Street. She also announced that there's a 10 calendar day appeal period to the planning commission for each of the projects that I just listed.
Any other committee updates? Good or thought for the group?
I've got one comment. On the ABR, so the Lacumbra Prods, the Sears project, we'll call it the Sears project, and I noticed something was very, very concerning, which is the comments this commission had were basically relegated to sort of like a complete afterthought of the presentations, and I want to bring that to my fellow commissioners, because it's concerning that the process is, it comes to us, we make a collective set of recommendations, at least comments, to these other boards, either the ABR, HLC, depending on where the project's located, and it doesn't seem like that's being put front and center to these other groups as part of the staff report or part of the staff presentation. So I just want to bring that to something that we need to talk to staff about, and I'm not sure what the process to get some kind of regular way that this commission's things are brought forward, instead of just being, sort of like, in fact, in that case, if you watched that hearing, it was like, only because one of the members of the committee brought it up, it was even brought to their attention. So if we could have a discussion, I'm not sure how we get the staff process, how are our... So if we could have a discussion, I'm not sure how we get the staff process, how our comments are presented to these boards, especially on big projects. I'm not sure to the council how we do that, or is that just something we should talk to Allison about?
Commissioner Bauckey, you have the city planner sitting right there, so I think she heard you.
I know, I know. Okay. This is something I, I don't tend to watch those other bodies, and I was very, very concerned at how it was sort of lost in the process. And to me, it would be the first thing that would, should be, it should be like, here's what the commission said, applicant makes their presentation. So this should be part of the staff report, but you know, a lot of those bodies don't really have staff reports, you know, and that's where I think it sort of got lost in the vapor. But it'd be, I think, appropriate that we have the commission's comments front and center as part of the staff presentation, then like the applicant say how they address it. Supposedly, in that case, they supposedly had addressed it in some written thing, but it hadn't even got to the members of the Architects for U board either. It's got lost in the vapor, too. So we need to clean up that process, so our comments aren't just sort of lost, is really my point. Because we don't see these projects usually ever again, or at least, especially with the way states sort of set up our rules, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Bauckey. Is that some, I feel like your feedback was noted and received, but if we can talk about this at another time as well, if that's helpful for folks on the commission.
And I did have another item.
Okay.
Yeah, start on that. I actually attended that meeting, and I was even sitting there, and a commission did bring it up, and they couldn't even find the minutes. They had to take a break to search for the minutes. And I think all that came out of that was that we made a comment about the tower. We didn't like the way the towers looked, and the comment was, to relook the towers, among other things. So I just wanted to bring that up. And overall, the feedback was, they were not happy with the project. They didn't think it was Santa Barbara architect, and so they need to go back and do a lot of work on it. I think it was pre-application also, it wasn't even, it didn't start the screening yet, right? It wasn't, the application wasn't final, it's pre-application, is my understanding.
So the application that came to you was a pre-application?
No, I mean, I'm talking about...
ABR saw the formal application.
It's a what?
ABR was reviewing the formal application.
Oh, they were.
It's just under concept review.
Oh, that is true. Under concept review.
Right.
At design review.
Right.
So they weren't taking action on it, but they were providing their conceptual comments. The project's not yet deemed complete.
Exactly. And it's going to come back, it was just continued indefinitely, and then it has to come back to relook the design some more.
That's correct. All right. Vice Chair Boss.
All right. I have a report from Downtown Parking Committee. So last month, I think I mentioned, their committee meeting was held the same day, and they discussed the Paseo Nuevo proposed project the same day as the planning commission did. And I think we carried some of their comments over during that hearing, but they felt so strongly about their comments being clearly communicated, that they've also drafted a letter that will be sent to city council with their comments, in addition to the minutes that will go to council, and that will be transmitted to us as well. So just a heads up, aside from the Downtown Parking Committee meeting minutes with their comments about Paseo Nuevo, you'll get a letter as well, and that should be coming, I think, in the next couple of days.
Any other comments? Did you have another thought?
On your agenda, which is on subcommittees, at the last meeting, we suggested to staff to put a discussion about a sub, creation of a subcommittee for the State Street Master Plan. And I just looked at the next week's agenda, and it's not on there. So I was wondering if that was just an error on staff's part, that you were going to amend our agenda, put it on there, or are we looking for another meeting, another cycle out for such conversation?
Chair Wardlow, Commissioner Bauckey, that was oversight, so we can, we'll put it on as soon as possible. I'm not sure if we have the ability to amend it next week's at this point. It might be too late to do. We can?
It's, as long as it's 72 hours out, it's just a burden on staff.
Yeah, just, I looked at, you know, we get our stuff on Thursday sometimes after our meetings, and this time we got it before, and it wasn't on there. So I just brought, that's the reason why I'm bringing it up, so.
I'm sorry, it does say on the agenda, though, if you look at the agenda today, it does say discussion on subcommittees. It's generically stated, but it does...
But in the past, councils wanted to actually have a line item discussion.
It has to have an item of what the discussion, subcommittee discussion...
Oh, you just can't discuss it even though it's listed?
No. All right.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. It is now 1:49 PM. That concludes our November 13th Planning Commission hearing. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, November 20th. Thank you all for being here, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you.